Portsmouth zoning board. Portsmouth zoning board review is now in session. Our first item is roll call, Mr. John Borden, Vice Chairman.
John Borden, present.
Mr. Eric Ruposo, member.
Present.
Thank you. Sue Horowitz, member.
Present.
Mr. Donovan.
Present.
Thank you. Chairman James Naught is here as well. There's going to be one continuation, which, Mr. Martin, do you want to come up? It's the petition of 1127 RE Investment. 1172 West Main Road, which is otherwise known as Sunset cabins, as we all used to know it as. So, Guy, you want to continue that?
Yes.
Alrighty, which is May 18th. So, can I have a motion to continue the petition of 1127 RE Investment LLC through our regularly scheduled meeting in May 18th?
I'll make the motion to continue the.
Could I have a second? Most have been made in second to continue the petition. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Martin. So if anyone is here that was either for or opposed, or just want to speak on the cabins on West Main Road, not hearing that. Okay, so the first item on the agenda under whole business is petition by James and Catherine Barry. The property located at Zero Anthony Road, Tax Assessor's Map, One Lot, 19. Mr. Schpel. Is the mic on? No.
Now it's on.
Now it's on screen.
Screen now. Can you hear that? A little preliminary work on the petition before we introduce Neil. This is a very small lot. It is what it is. It's 2,105 square feet, but it's taxed as a buildable lot owned by the Barry's. And they have sought to build a modest house on it. The house that's proposed is 25 by 26, or a total of 600 and some square feet. It clearly is a small lot. We're certainly not trying to put a big house on a small lot, but it is small. And there is no way when you do the building envelope of a 20-foot front yard, 20-foot side yard, like 10-foot sides and 20-foot back, and put a septic system on it, that it can be done without, you know, lot coverage variances or some dimensional relief variances. So Neil was tasked with trying to put a 24-foot house on a lot and minimize all of those variances. In an attempt to limit those, he first designed a septic system and located it, the smallest of a system as one can put on there, and then put that as close to the property line as allowed by DEM, and then put the house as close to the septic system as allowed by DEM with the separation of the tank. With the width of the house, that forced a sideline setback to be less than the 10 feet, and we'll get into those specifically. I didn't file the petition, Neil did, but we'll start with saying he put a front yard variance of a 20-foot and it being seven. I mean. Yeah. It being 7.9 feet away, he said it needed the difference between 20 feet and 7.9. That is not accurate because, as you know, in Portsmouth, you look to the adjacent properties and you can do the average. So I asked Neil, since he filed the petition, to calculate the distances for the immediate properties to both adjacent properties, north and south, and they come out on an at five and 12 with an average of 17. And it would be an 8.1 foot as a matter of right.
8.1.
There. So the northerly parcel is five feet. The southerly parcel is 12.3. Mr. Chairman, do we need to swear amen as an expert witness?
Yeah, we will. Thank you.
Which would be 17.3, and half of that would be 8.65.
All right. Mr. Higurani could testify or swear. So, so tell the truth. Full name and address for Teresa.
I do. Neil Higurani, 3102 East Man Road, Portsmouth.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we recognize Mr. Higurani as an expert in civil engineering.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Most have been made in second to acknowledge Mr. Neil Higurani as an expert in civil engineering. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
So, Neil, with the average of 8.65 under our ordinance, the house could be 8.65 feet from the Anthony Road setback. That's not from the McAdam, of course, but from the property line. Is that right?
From the right of way. That's correct.
And although the petition said left our number at 7.9, it requested a variance based on it being 20 feet from the property line.
Correct.
So the variance is not the difference between 20 feet and 7.9, but the variance between 8.65 feet and 7.9.
That's correct.
Which by my math is .75 of one-foot variant, front yard variance.
Also correct.
So under a one-foot variance in the front yard. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So do you want to amend? Do you want to amend the petition?
I think we need to amend the petition. I think we can amend it down, not, not up, obviously, but it's just less relief when I calculated it.
Right. The variance request is going to be one foot to the property line.
It's not 7 point.
It's pavement.
No, it's 7.9 feet away from the property line, which is exactly where there is on your drawing. But because we could go 8.65 as a matter of right, our variance is the delta between 8.65 and 7.9, not between 20 feet. It doesn't change at all where the house is or where it is on the petition, but it is less of a variance request.
Okay. So could I have a motion that we allow the applicant to amend their petition where the actual variance they're requesting is a one-foot variance from the average eight-point, the difference between 8.65 of the average adjacent properties and 7.9? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, Mr. Schpel.
All right. So now that straightens out the request for the front yard variance. As I said, the side yard variance to.
Straight up.
I'll call north, that sideline, because the septic system is on that side. We've pushed the house as far north as possible, but no variance is requested because there's more than 10 feet from the property line to the foundation. Unfortunately, on the south side, that leaves 7.3 feet where 10 feet would be required. So if the board were to allow us to have this 24-foot by 26-foot house, that would require a 2.7-foot sideline variance. Now, the real variance, if you will, are the largest variance. The rear yard is three feet where 20 feet is required. I remind you that this is one of the situations you've seen in Common Fence Point before, that it's not, it is three feet from a property line, but it's three feet from the common fence point area that is owned by everyone. And how far to the bay?
Uh, where? Let's just say over 100 feet to the bay.
So it's over 100 feet to the bay. There's the width of that Common Fence Point Association land. As you know, in that area, there's a number of houses actually encroach on that Common Fence Point Association, and many more come close to it. But given the width of this lot of 40 feet, getting as much front yard as we can to minimize the variance in the width of a 24-foot house, it just, the math of a slightly irregular shaped lot makes our closest point three feet on one side and six feet or so on the other side as the rear property line goes away from it. Because the lot's 2,102 square feet, we only have a 20% lot coverage, which would be 410-foot house, which is 10 by 40. I, I think I call that a camper. And the real question that we've seen usually when we're here is, is the petitioner asking for a house bigger than practical, given his lot, and has he done the least relief necessary? Or do we force him to shorten the house to 18 feet or 20 feet or something that would be slightly less? Again, this house has to go on stilts because of the flood plain, and underneath it, you have pilings, the pilings that hold it up. So on, there's no room on this small lot to park except under a house. To park under that house, you need to be able to get between the pilings. So even a house that's 24 feet wide still has these two-foot pillars, and it still reduces the ability to park the two cars under that garage widthwise, because the 24 feet reduced by the pilings on both sides with one in the middle leaves just two 10-foot areas. And even our parking spots, according to our ordinance, are a minimum 10 feet wide. So if the house is any narrower with pillars, we couldn't park one car on each side of the pillar. That makes a lot coverage. Another thing that Neil did that not everybody does is he included in the lot coverage a patio at grade level on the back. The patio is paved, and it's pervious, I'm sure, but it's still, he went the 24 feet by a four-foot wide patio. That also, if you looked at the drawing of the house, on the second floor aiming the water, there was a master bedroom deck, which is much smaller than, than the 24-foot in length. But we didn't recount it because we did count the entire 24-by-four patio down below. Again, in order to minimize the rear yard setback, we kept that patio at four feet wide and a deck looking over the water on a house that's on the water at four feet wide. I don't think anybody here believes that they wouldn't want a deck that's 16 feet wide on the back of that house looking at that water. And I do think a deck less than four feet is clearly the least relief necessary. But when you add the 600 square feet with the patio, it comes up to a total of, I believe, 696 square feet?
That's correct.
696 square feet, and when you divide that by the 2,102, it does come out to 33.1% lot coverage. That requires a 13.1% lot coverage, which again, even on a 4,000-square-foot lot seems large. But on a 2,000-square-foot lot, every time you put a four-by-four piece of plywood on the ground, you take up a statistical percentage of your 2,102 square feet. So again, we believe it's the least relief necessary. And to summarize the relief that's necessary, it would be that front yard variance of under one foot between 8.65 and .79, which to me would be a .75, 75 percentage points of a foot. On the sideline to the south, we're currently located 7.3 feet away, which would be a 2.7-foot variance. We require no variance on the north. We require a 17-foot variance at the closest point on the rear and a 13.1% lot coverage variance.
I think it was Mr. Schpel. Questions for the applicant? John?
Yeah, I just want to quickly, I tried to this, I just want to summarize the relief that's being sought. It's a 13.1% lot coverage variance. The lot itself is 2,100 square feet. You're looking for a one-foot front yard variance, a 2.7-foot side yard variance, and a rear yard variance of what?
I believe that's 17 feet because the 20-foot is required under our ordinance in an R10, and we are three feet from the common land.
All right. So rear yard of 17 feet. Thank you.
I will say there is no, there are no height variances requested. There are no variance as to stories. This is just elevated, as you know, that on the water with the pillars, and then it's just the one and a half stories to fit the ordinance.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Schpel. No, because there's nothing on the lot.
Because.
It's an undersized lot. Undersized lot.
Yeah, it's not, the applicant, um, it's not a special use permit, actually, but it's, it's a substandard lot of record.
Correct.
Go through that criteria.
So we can, because it's a substandard lot of record, I will ask Neil the.
Article six, section.
Extra questions under article six.
Section D.
Section D. Neil, do you have an opinion on whether or not the design will allow for adequate fire protection?
I do, and it does.
It's accessible by the road and on the side, you could get fire equipment and is, we're able to get emergency hernies and things to the backyard.
Uh, that's correct. Yes, correct.
And it provides adequate light through buildings?
Uh, yes, it does.
On the south, the closest building to the neighbor's lot is not the house, which is over 100 feet away, I believe. But there is a shed and garage close to the property line.
Correct. That's a few feet off. The house is probably 60 feet away.
And would it also the characteristic of the neighborhood or adversely affect the neighboring properties?
Uh, I don't think so. It's complying environmentally and within character of the neighborhood.
It's consistent with some of the other small lots and the size of houses in proportion to the size of the lots that they're on.
Very much so.
And won't create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average of area of other similar lots in the area?
That are preexisting, yes.
And finally, it won't impose a substantial detriment to the public or immediate neighborhood?
Correct.
And again, it's a preexisting taxed lot, and your task was design a house, the least relief necessary to get the septic on it, to try to get some deck to enjoy the views of the high rent district tax-wise for the ocean and to allow parking off-street, all concerns of Common Fence Point.
Correct, while still allow for a somewhat functional house to exist.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any butters or interested parties want to speak to this? Or do I have somebody that wants? Sir, come up.
Who are you?
My name is George Bishop. I live at 1265 Anthony. That's lot 18.
Yes, sir.
So. I was born in 61. I've been visiting this property since I've been born. If we look at properties 19 and 20, those original lots were all one lot. And, and sometime in the 70s, 80s, that person decided to move out and sell his lots. He offered my family that lot to use as parking because we were, we had an arrangement with them to allow us to use that lot for parking. Um, but it was not a buildable lot then. Um, so my father didn't want to invest in it. And so, but what happened is the house across the street, which is owned by the applicant, the 145, the person, people owned before he owned it, bought that lot so we can park his trucks for his business. I don't know what kind of, I, that's, that's the thing. I'm not sure he, as, I don't know if he's produced a viable deed, but just because you paid property taxes on a property doesn't necessarily mean you own the property. So I think there's a shady history on, on how that lot transfers, but the short of it is what I'm saying is that lot was given to that other lot for parking because it was non-buildable, it was a small spot for parking. Um, so what, what's happening is, is I'm concerned in the future that people can like subdivide or exchange a piece of their property with a neighbor or somebody else for some other reason. And then someday down the road in history, they come back and say, whoa, my lot's too small. I need the, a variance. I need hardship. Um, so. He asked that by right, he had to reduce the, the frontage, which I can understand taking the average of the houses in front. But, I mean, that's like strike one there, strike two on the sidewalls, the rear walls, the property coverage. There's a lot of strikes here. So I, I'm concerned with the, my property next to it because if that house catches on fire, the heat's going to get my house on fire. And this is, this is legitimately going to be a three-story house. So if you want to protect it from fire, you can't even put a ladder on the property and, and reach the upper floors without the ladder being tipsy. I mean, the, the sidewalls will be so short. So, um, I've seen a lot of fires in these common point areas, and it's very difficult for the fire trucks to get even behind those buildings, never mind trying to get through, uh, what might be parked cars in front. We already have it difficult now with people because in that lot across the street, uh, lot 45, they use this parking. There's, people will park on the street if they don't have parking. They're not going to be opening up their garage, parking their car and back and forth like that. People come, especially like this place.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Can you stick to just this piece of property, please?
Okay, so on this property, I'm concerned of the, the, the fire safety because I don't even think you can get a ladder placed to do that. Um, and that's all I have.
Okay, just to address a couple of your concerns, first is that, um, it's always been an unbuildable lot. I'm guessing that's an urban myth. Because lots don't necessarily start as unbuildable lots and all of a sudden magically become buildable lots.
Understood.
As to, I'm sure probably always was a buildable lot, but somebody once said to somebody, oh, no, you can't build on that. It's too small. So the story goes on, and we see that. There's not a piece of property in Common Fence Point that you can do anything with without needing a variance coming from the board here. As far as your fire concerns, um, that's why the town has a ladder truck. Very simply for high things. The only reason the house is being put up on stilts is not that the applicant wants to spend all that much more money. It's because Department of Environmental Management and Coastal Resources says you have to do that. As you can see, driving through Common Fence Point Island Park, you'll see some of the older homes than a newer one. Because it's been determined that's a flood plain, this is what you now have to do. So parking issue, if the parking becomes that much of an issue, my recommendation is I have to take pictures, let the police know. We can't, we can't hold something against an applicant or even you for what somebody else is doing down there. Okay, but if it's that much of an issue, then by all means, you should report it now. Because it becomes a civil matter. So, I just wanted to get that out for you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
No. And I just want to counter that, yeah, originally that, they were all buildable lots, but they were acquired as a, as a conjunctive thing.
I've seen the maps down there.
And then the laws changed and, and somebody just traded a piece of land that.
There are, there are houses on other people's property down there by part of the house. Because years ago, some of the surveys weren't correct, and when they corrected them, part of your house was on my property and. But, yeah. That was surveyed all little lots way back.
Right. But.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
I just wanted to keep you, but you have.
Appreciate it. All right, anyone else? Sure, come on up.
Hello.
Hello. Name and address for Teresa, please.
Melissa Santinello, 1271 Anthony Road. Thanks. Um, so just a few concerns.
Yep, just a little bit.
I'll raise it up. How's that?
That's better.
Right. Just a few concerns. So one of the questions that I had is I heard the, the discussion tonight was that they needed two parking spots. Is that, um, that was one of the arguments, which I hadn't heard before. Is that something that is necessary to build a house on Common Fence Point?
Not, I know.
Why is, why is that?
That's up here. But in designing, you know, we are well aware of the parking problem. So we did want to make our lot self-supporting and self-sufficient. Another two-bedroom house of.
Two cars.
To have two cars. There is no place on this lot for us to put a garage. By making this 25 feet instead of 24 or 24 feet, it allowed us to get two underneath that allow us. Now, I understand if other people are parking on this, we're losing parking in the neighborhood.
Right.
But we're making sure that our lot is self-supporting and self-sufficient, not adding to the problem.
Correct.
Yes.
If we get a 16-foot house, it tells a 16-foot out, that's not going to add a parking spot.
Yeah.
Well, that is not my argument, but thank you. Um, my argument is why would a house need a two, it's a two-bedroom house, from what I understand. It has two parking spots. I live in a three-bedroom house. We bought a house that had two parking spots and we had three cars. So what did we do? We cut into our yard and we built another piece of our driveway. Um, and we think that if you can't fit the house in the lot, like you shouldn't accommodate the house just to put the two parking spots underneath the house because street parking sucks. Like that, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense. So having two parking spots is, um, it's a luxury. We were lucky to have two in our house. When we didn't have enough room, we built a third. Um, I agree with Mr. Chappelle that parking on the street is a nightmare, and I agree with our neighbor as well that the parking is a nightmare. Um, you know, I'm not going to go into what other houses are doing, but we have witnessed quite a bit of rental house parking on the street.
Quite obvious when you drive down there.
It's pretty tight, yeah. And I'm a trustee of Common Fence Point. Neil actually was the one who, um, brought me onto the, the committee. So I'm well aware of the concerns, and we deal with it every day from all the neighbors. So I am very sympathetic to them. I'm also sympathetic to where we live. It's tight. And there was a horrific accident, as I'm sure you're aware of, weeks ago. And thank goodness, the emergency vehicles were able to come through the road, park outside that house and get in there and, and take care of what was happening inside the house, but also outside the house. I remain very concerned that in the middle of the night, when you've got, you know, other cars parked on the street, we've seen fire trucks come through in the middle of the night. Thank goodness they get through because most people try to stay off the street, but when you have a weekend where you're renting a house and there's people, they don't know. And if they don't have that other parking spot, they might park on the street. If that fire truck gets stuck, we are screwed.
Well, again, that goes back to my recommendation to Mr. Bishop is that's a civil matter. Okay, the whole parking thing, and I agree.
Yeah.
And it's, you bring it up to this board, but at some point, I think you really need to bring it up to the police department. And if push came to shove, get it on a town council agenda. Change the parking down there to the side of the road.
Don't worry. Yeah.
But have the police come down. If, if they set up certain parking requirements to ease the situation. I mean, you can get the input from the fire department, support it.
Yes.
But that's what I would do.
We are, yes, we are already working with the town council on this. So that is something that the Common Fence Point trustees are actually working on because it is extremely dangerous right now. Um, but I do wonder why a house needs two parking spots when, yeah. Finally, my third thought is just erosion. And, you know, being that close to the property line on the side facing the Common Fence Point 10-feet strip as well as the, the coastal piece of the property that they are facing. Um, we do worry about flooding and erosion. There is a lot of issue with drainage. We had a humongous flood in December where our neighbors to the right and to the left, uh, the neighbors to the right of Lot 19th, to the right and the left, were both completely flooded out to the point where one of the neighbors who I believe is on the, um, his name is Dan Acom. I think he's on the Zoom. His lot, and he can speak to this more than me, but his lot was completely flooded out. He got the fire department there for two days straight pumping out his yard. And I believe that, um, the water had started to come over the road at other points in time. So when you put another structure in there, erosion of that land that helps.
Off the design of the house and Mr. Foz just pointed out to me, they have a rain garden.
Which dumps into Dan Oncom's land, I think.
No, they can't dump into, no.
Where does it go?
On their own property.
It absorbs into the ground.
Into the ground.
Rain garden is just that. It's built to sort of like the old retention pods.
Oh, yes, it goes down. Yeah.
Yeah. Retention pond, except now they put plants and everything, and it's considered a rain garden. So now any runoff from the house, roof leaders, all that goes in there to settle out and leach into the ground, not run off the land back into.
So it doesn't leach into the land behind the houses?
It reaches into its land right there. Now, what happens when it gets underground? Same thing as what happens at your house when it gets underground. Yours probably runs off more than this.
Why?
Because this has its own little retention area. Yours wouldn't.
I think they're doing their best to mitigate this.
Yeah, right. So if everybody's house contained in the ground absorbed it, it's a same rate. Can't ask for any more than that. Right? If everybody's, you know, how many houses have this in the area and their water is shed off their property? So I think the best thing is contain it. And that's what they're trying to do. They can't really do anything else with it. You know, I mean, it's, it doesn't, if, yes, it's going to absorb into the ground, it might. But it's not, it's not adding any more water to that area. If you take the footprint, they're just taking the water from the roof, shedding it to one location. But if the house wasn't there, you're still getting the same amount of rainfall in that, in that lot. Right? They're just directing it to one area.
So.
Sure, go ahead.
I think you'll also find your, your properties, they have a higher standard they have to meet to get a building permit um, to keep the water on their property. So.
And not flooding.
I'd say it's actually going to be better than. Going to be better than the older properties, the other thing.
So that comes from coastal resources too.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, it, no, it's building permits, building permits.
Right. Are addressed.
But it does have.
So these are designed better than.
In some, now, because e- even in some of the new builds, you have to reestablish the coastal buffer. So if you buy a house, it's got. They mow all the vegetation down, you, they make you replant that vegetation to get a new permit or a building.
Yeah, I don't think they're supposed to mow the vegetation down, but that's, yeah.
People have not.
Right.
Or have in the past, but I'm just saying now, all these new codes, they're trying to establish that what, that what my buffer back and. Kind of deal with issues like that to try and lessen the impact, you know, I. I don't know.
Okay, no, that's helpful. That's actually, that is helpful. That is helpful. Thank you.
If I can say one other thing, the zoning code actually requires two parking spaces per single family unit. That's actually in the zoning code, so they.
So they have to.
Providing it, then they would have to ask for a leave. From parking.
So.
Which to do that would mean they want to park on the street.
Yeah, no, that's the last thing they want, yeah. Or they could park in their yard. Where they have room.
I, I have the zoning code.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Structural. Engineering of the, of the breakaway walls and stuff on the house. With the, because it's got breakable, breakaway walls in it.
Yeah.
The way that that structures go off the ground, it's, it might have some sort of.
So.
You can't eliminate that center post to kind of.
Right, because of the walls. That, that I understand.
Yeah.
So with um a final question that I have is with variances, is a seventeen-foot variance? Normal coming on?
No, it's.
That seems extreme.
Seventeen-foot variance to the rear, that's to the property. Okay.
Yeah.
It's the distance to their property. The ordinance requires twenty feet. They'll be three feet from their property. But they'll be. Umpteen feet from, say, the water. Okay, it's not uncommon in Common Fence Point, see the houses. That close to their rear property line. Or the front. Because the front. If you look, your house probably, you've been mowing the town's lawn for a long time. Because the property line isn't the street. It's another ten feet. So if you look in Common Fence Point, you see where the telephone poles are. You've got ten feet in.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah, that's your property line. It's not out here. It's, the town originally. Did that say, oh, you know, someday we're going to put in like forty or sixty-foot wide roads, which.
They never did, I know, I'm aware of that, yeah.
So everybody that comes here for anything. For a renovation addition, that has to work on their front of their house, always needs a variance. And it sounds big. But when you say, well, how much further is it from your house, from your property line to the road, they say, well, at least another ten feet. So you may be asking for five feet. But you're going to be fifteen feet.
Is that, is that for existing structures or new structures?
Existing.
That, but this is new.
That's right, but it comes under, the way our ordinance reads is they have the right to bill within the mean average setback of house adjacent properties. So if the property on the left and the right. Are closer to the road, they're allowed to as well, even with new construction.
So I guess what's the point of a build of unbuildable lot then?
Nobody said it's an unbuildable lot. It's a lot of record. See, here's the thing, in the ordinance. It says. You can't deny somebody building a house on a lot of record. They have the right to reasonable enjoyment of their property. Nobody's deemed this lot unbuildable. Again, that goes back to an urban myth. Somebody said one day, you can't build on that lot.
Hmm, we've heard different, okay. And then finally, in terms of um, alright, I won't ask this. Yeah, it's just a question of figuring out. I was in the town records pretty much a lot of today and part of yesterday, just trying to figure out. How this lot was originally, you know, contracted and brought with the original. The house across the street, which by the way is a rental where we've had parking problems um from the same owner. And I'm curious to know, I I actually didn't see it sold with this land. I saw it sold with a different piece of land, so. I don't know if there's, uh, this is a records issue. I don't think it's a zoning issue, but.
Not a zoning issue.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get to the bottom of it.
And you will find that there were, to Mr. Bishop's thing, a lot of people thought, well, this is one big lot.
Yeah.
Become. Because at some point, somewhere, somebody probably subdivided the lot. When it's simple, which everybody.
Yeah, no, it was very clearly subdivided. Yeah, that wasn't the issue because it was, it was. It was turned over to the berries under one contract, but then when it was. Actually turned over to them, well, when it was turned over to them, it was turned over with Lot eighty-six. Which is in a whole different part of Common Fence Point, which the previous owners owned, along with Lot nineteen. Um, but we never actually found like where like Lot nineteen was purchased, like we found where the original owner bought Lot eighty-six. And Lot twenty-four across the street. We never found where the original owner prior to the berries had purchased the. Um, Lot nineteen. So that was something I spent quite a bit of time on the phone and in the database, as you know, today with um the records. Department, they could not find anything. So we were just a little bit confused. That's something I'll pursue with them though, as well, just so that we, we know what's, you know.
Alright.
Um, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, uh, Ken, Ken Reed, twelve seventy-one Anthony Road.
Yes, sir.
Um, so. I, I like to deal with common sense and. Mr. Chappelle and Neil, um. They've told you every reason why the, the lot is, is smaller than this room. It is the smallest lot by far on, on the street. It's too small for a house. We're talking a three-story house. On a lot that's smaller than this.
Correct you there. Yeah, I'm not talking a three-story house.
We're talking a three-story house.
Two-story house.
With.
An elevated foundation as required by the state of Rhode Island, so it's a two-story house.
I have the drawing. If you look at the drawing, there's three stories.
There is not. There are two stories, raised foundation.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, this is a two-story house and it does not exceed the thirty-five-foot height limit.
I understand.
So it's allowed under the ordinance.
I, I.
It is not a three-story house.
Great. I understand. My, my eyes tell me something different. I understand what you, what you're saying is the law. My point is. Folks, it's smaller, the, the lot is smaller than this room. It, it's too small. We, we're asking for variances all over the place. I bought, I bought a house six years ago at the top of the market and I did my research. I figured out what R-ten was. I figured out what R-ten was for a single, a single-room house, a double-room house, what the square footage is. There's three empty lots in the area. The place is overcrowded as it is by far, and I think we can all agree that. Agree to that. And I, I figured out the rules and I figured, and I decided to spend money to buy the house, to move to the area, knowing what could and could not be built on. This house cannot be built on this lot. What, what, does R-ten not mean anything? Do, do these laws not mean anything? I, I don't, I don't understand how it can just be changed.
One would need to review the variance request conditions in the ordinance to understand that. Okay? New construction as. Or a regular standard lot. This is a non-conforming lot of record. Okay?
I agree.
As is a number of lots right on that road. All non-conforming lots of record.
They all had structures on them. This has never had a structure.
It's still a non-conforming lot of record and there is certain criteria that you have to abide by. It doesn't say you have to meet the R-ten requirements of ten thousand square feet. You're not going to do that.
Were, were. A very small percentage of that, obviously, yes.
Right, so it's already non-conforming. And you are allowed by right to do what they are doing tonight, asking for a variance.
I understand.
Leave from those.
Right.
As I stated many times earlier this evening, just as anyone doing anything in Common Fence Point, nine out of ten people. If they want to replace the shutters on the front of their house, I'll be for this board because they need a variance. There's nothing down there is conforming. Okay, so to answer that question, you would have to sit and really read the ordinance, understand. What's allowed, what we have to take into consideration. When determining whether a variance should be granted or not. Okay? So. I get what you're saying.
When is too far? This is a rental property they're building as well.
Okay.
Does that have any, does it have any intention?
Is, you cannot prove to me it's a rental property, number one. Number two, if you wanted to rent your house tomorrow, we can't stop it.
I understand.
We cannot take that into consideration. Unfortunately, we can't.
Okay, I understand.
And, and that's out of our jurisdiction. That becomes a civil issue if. Somebody's renting it, it's creating issues in the, in the neighborhood. You know, we have a pretty good idea of what's going on down there. And we've tried to mitigate what we can legally. But at the end of the day, we can't take into consideration, people are going to build houses or renovate them to make them rentals. We can't do that.
Good. That's all I got. I, I, I would. I would just recommend that you guys go look at the lot.
I did.
Okay.
Some of us, I mean, I don't know who goes down. Most of us do take a ride down through and.
But look, look at the design and look at the lot.
Yeah.
Common sense again, it, it, n- nothing, that's, it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Debbie O'Hara. I live at twelve seventy-eight Anthony Road. So, I'm on Mr. Reed's page. As far as R-ten, I thought that meant that it was. Of, I, I'm so confused now because I'm, I'm not going to use the word a non-buildable lot because you've corrected everyone so many times. But my understanding was that was too small to be built on. Actually, when the berries bought that property or the house across the street, I was looking at it for myself. When I was looking at it, um. I was told that it can't, that, what my point here is that. When the berries, my understanding at the time was that when they were selling the house. Across the street, that lot came with. The sale of that house. Now that, I didn't buy the house and something could have changed with it. But my point is that the berries did not pay for a buildable lot. They kind of got a house that came with a lot. And there you have it. Because your heart would be broken if you knew somebody had paid. A lot of money for, and then were told they couldn't build on it, but. Your heart's not going to be broken if somebody got a. Little extra piece of property to park some cars on and throw in with the deal that the house they just bought and um. They tried to build a house on it and it didn't work out, oh well, you know, it's a nice place for maybe a garage for the house across the street. Also, the two, the two, you know, the parking for two cars. Under the house requires the house to be larger than it would be otherwise because.
Excuse me, no, that's totally incorrect.
Ah, good.
Okay? The state of Rhode Island, okay, requires that house be elevated.
Yes.
Okay, this is a discussion we had on what is. The foundation. The foundation is not the ground. The foundation is where the first floor begins, has to be elevated. But because of that, it allows them to park two cars in that space under the house.
Yes.
If they didn't have to elevate the house and build it around. They would still have to provide two parking places, but. I don't know where they would put them. Because they can't park on the septic system. So it happens to be because they're mandated to raise the house. For this, you can't make it a livable space. Or anything like that. It has to have the breakaway panels for flooding, but they can put their cars.
Right. And once their cars are there, they can't have any company with any cars.
Well, again, that goes to your whole neighborhood issue.
Well, it does, but my lot is very small and my house is very small, smaller than what they're pro- proposing. Um, I have a, but I have a driveway. That can accommodate at least two cars, maybe even three. I can also have my small front yard. Um, which is um deep enough for more accommodation of two more cars. I just think it's very important. That that be a consideration.
And if not knowing your lot, but your lot sure didn't have requirements as is, like we were talking earlier about the rain garden.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a rain garden in your lot?
I don't, no, I have a garden.
No, a rain garden would be in the area specifically designed to catch runoff from the roof leaders and from the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Because of that, now you can't park on that either. So if your house were to be built today. Just the way it is on your lot, you may find that. You may be able to only park one car there by the time you met all of the other now new requirements.
Right, but my house is there and there is parking there, so. My lot would never be, I don't, it would be the. I wouldn't even, it would be like trying to build on this lot. I wouldn't even think about it. It's too small. My lot would be too small by today's standards and regulations to be built on, but it was built on years ago.
And it did.
And now we have new regulations.
It's. Again, you're assuming that your lot, if your house wasn't there, couldn't be built on.
I mean.
Thus starts the urban legend that it's an unbuildable lot. Nobody ever came and said on this particular lot, DM or Coastal, saying, you can't build on here, it's, it's wetlands, it's all this. No one's ever said, this is not a buildable lot. It's someone said it to someone one day and that now has. You know, just progressed to everybody assuming it's an unbuildable lot.
So all lots are now buildable, but what is R-ten?
R-ten is a certain requirement. It's ten thousand square feet, there's certain setback requirements for an R-ten. R-twenty is twenty thousand square feet. I, R-thirty, thirty thousand four feet and so on down the line. You're allowed to ask for variances from anything. You can have an R-sixty and ask for a, a variance as well.
And I just want to end with saying, I think this lot requires too many variances.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? There's one online. Okay, can you bring him up? Can we see him up on the screen? Hello? Oh, I think she's muted. Is that Winfield? Oh, there you go. Ms. Winfield, can you hear it? There you are. Oh, we had you.
Very good, so. This is Kevin Weinfeld. I live at twelve fifty Anthony Road.
Yes, sir.
And my question is, you, you keep using the, the, the terminology that it's a non-conforming lot.
Right.
So, a- and I get that, but there's no structure on it, so it's not like it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. So if you allow them to build the house uh with the variances and as tight a lot as it is. Are you exacerbating the non-conformity?
No, because there's a set of criteria on substandard lots of record. Okay? Which went through that a lot of parcel of land have in frontage, uh, a lot of area that is less than required. May be considered buildable for single-family residential purposes regardless of the lot frontage or lot area. Okay, then any dimensional variance goes through that there's a certain criteria. A through E that they have to prove that they um. Would they, would they allow adequate space for fire protection, provide adequate light and air between buildings, et cetera? Would it alter the character of the neighborhood? Um, would it? I mean, all the houses down there encroach on everything. Um, and then it, you go from there onto the variance um request, which there's all kinds of um. Requirements that the board has to take into consideration if we either grant or deny a variance. Okay? And um. That's what we go by. So it's, no, the, there's a whole section in here that deals strictly with building on a substandard lot of record.
So I, I guess my, then my other question would be, you know, with the variances, if they were granted, and this probably mostly it would go to Neil. Is, for example, with the variance to the north, Bishop's house. How much space would there actually be between the two structures?
Twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three feet between the two houses?
Correct.
Okay.
So combining the eighteen and the five.
So the septic system is going to be on that side of the house, is that what you're saying? Between those two houses, okay. That's what, I, I don't have the drawing in front of me, so I, I couldn't see that. And the other side, well, it, it would, it, I'm sure that there's a, a certain amount of distance, but as was mentioned earlier, that the. Only structure that's right there is, is, is a freestanding garage on the other side there. So it's not directly. Adjacent, physically adjacent to the home that's there on the south. So it's not directly adjacent, physically adjacent to the home that's there on the south.
Correct.
And then, and then in terms of the 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 rear setback um that you're that you're asking for a variance of, so that's to accommodate the patio and the deck on the second floor, is that the idea?
No, it's primarily they'll look for a lot coverage variance for the patio and the deck. See, any patio down there, e- even if it's removable, it's still co- considered a lot coverage, so you have to take that into consideration.
Right.
With any deck overhang, you have to take that into consideration as well.
But you're correct that.
Yep.
Because that patio is three feet away.
Right.
That's not the variance that needed.
Right.
Deck on top of it on that second level.
Right.
Only four feet wide, that goes out equal to that, so that would also be three feet, that's where the.
Right, correct. And and you've been talking a fair amount about the rain garden and where where's the rain garden be gonna be situated in relation to where the new house is?
South side of the new house.
I'm sorry, I can't hear him.
The south side of the new house is by in the house and the shed.
Okay, so that's where the rain garden will be.
Right.
Thank you, those are the only questions I have.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. Uh, do we have anyone else, Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are there any letters in the file?
I don't know, do we have any letters in the file?
Letters, one is, one of the letters is from uh Ms. O'Hara, who had already spoken.
Okay.
Read that again.
So do you need, Ms. O'Hara, do you wanna add anything to the letter you provided the board or did, does the letter and what you spoke the same?
I've gone off script a little bit when I was speaking, but I don't need to go off script anymore.
But we will keep it in the file.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
And the others from Kathy and Iris Singer at twelve eighty-two Anthony Road.
Okay.
In town of Portsmouth zoning board of review, I am writing this letter in response to the certified letter that was sent to me at twelve eighty-two Anthony Road. I am in a budding neighbor. I would come to the meeting, however, I am out of town. I am giving you some feedback as requested. One, it's hard to believe that this lot can hold a home of this size. The setbacks from the neighbors are very tight. This lot was previously a parking lot and it held two cars. And if there was any overflow, the street was blocked as it is a very narrow street. We are also concerned about emergency vehicle access with this type of setback on an already narrow street, particularly when the street floods or there is snow. Two, we are familiar with variances as we needed one for our construction project as lot coverage was an issue. This is not just a staircase or a generator, it was, it is a building. It also looks like the rear of the building is very close to the common fence land. I know other people have not been allowed to increase their deck size due to setbacks from C F P land. I know that new construction has different setbacks, but this seems like extreme lot coverage. Thank you for this time in this matter. Kathy and Iris Singer, twelve eighty-two Anthony Road.
Thank you. That it, Aaron? Okay. All right. Uh, James and Catherine Barrier before the board for Tax Assessor's Map One Lot Nineteen, uh requesting a one foot from the average setback um front yard variance, a two-point-seven-foot variance to the south side, a seventeen-foot to the rear yard variance, and no variance request for the side on the north. They are also seeking a thirteen-point-one percent lot coverage variance. And they have given testimony through their attorney that they did meet the criteria under section, Article Six, Section A four, A through E. Mr. Borden.
Mr. Chairman, this has been an interesting petition and I appreciate the feedback from all the butters. This board is tasked with analyzing the testimony and applying the zoning ordinance. The question in front of this board is whether the petitioner has more than a mere convenience to build a structure on a buildable lot that they've been paying taxes on. The requests for a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot lot in an R-ten zone um, in my opinion, are reasonable. The petitioner has the right for the full enjoyment of his property. A thirteen-point-one percent lot coverage variance for Common Fence Point is not unreasonable. And the one-foot front yard variance is also a reasonable request, as well as a two-point-seven-foot side yard variance to the south. The rear yard of seventeen feet might seem excessive, but the Common Fence Point common area in the rear lessens that that hardship. This is a two-bedroom house, it's not a four-bedroom house. It meets the height setback. And it also meets all the special criterion for a non-conforming lot of record. And to deny the petitioner the right to the full enjoyment of his land is amount to more than a mere convenience, I vote to approve all the requests.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa.
So I agree with my dear Mr. Borden in the vote to approve all these requests.
Thanks, Ms. Horowitz. Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
I'd like to also vote to approve your request for the uh reasons stated by Mr. Borden.
Okay. The chairman also votes to approve as well. Again, I agree with Mr. Borden, but I think to deny the applicant leaves him no other reasonable alternative way to enjoy what's illegally permitted use. In response to the excessive um variance requested, I will say this, that the two largest variance requests, which is the one foot from the average setback, almost every house in Common Fence Point breaks that, okay? Same with the seventeen-foot to the rear. Many houses encroach onto the common fence property, not just this one. So let's talk the side yard variances. They're asking for no variance on one side whatsoever in a two-point-seven foot. If they could center the house, they would have no side yard variance requests whatsoever, none. Huh? Right, because, only because D E M says you can't. But even then.
We're voting, excuse me.
But, but.
Talk while we're voting.
Even at that, it's only two-point-seven, which is minimum. So my vote is to approve as well, so petition's been approved. Hey. All right, uh.
Take a little.
Yeah, let's take a short break before we begin. I'm sorry? They're gonna, once the comp plan, um, the zoning ordinance is rewritten, it's all, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in our five zone. It's not gonna be in our ten. Well, they're gonna, well.
We still, we actually still have that variance.
It, well, if if the lot itself is not five thousand square feet, which a lot of them are four thousand, you'll still need a variance for non-conforming lot of record. Right, a reasonable, instead of a side yard setback of ten feet, they could, they'll reduce it to six or seven in an R-five zone. So we won't have as many requests for variances.
You have, you have to let it run where you can speak it. Oh, yeah, they're obviously passionate about it, but.
Yeah. Man. We gotta say to these guys, I said. Okay, the Portsmouth Zoning Board of Review is back in session. Our next item on the agenda is petitioned by Nathan Tillman, uh Dragonfire Properties LLC, or Tax Assessor's Map Thirty-four Lot Twenty-seven, seeking a dimensional variance and relief under standard under substandard lot of record, Article Six, Section A for Criteria A through E, Mr. Tillman, raise your right hand, sort of tell the truth.
I do.
Full name and address?
Nathan Tillman, um, sixty Oliver Hazard Perry Road, Fortuna.
Okay, and for the record, um, Ms. Horowitz has recused herself from this because her firm is doing work with Mr. Tillman. And under the new zoning regulations for the state of Rhode Island, we're now allowed to proceed with just four members. Correct, Mr. Gavin?
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
What would happen if it were a tie vote?
I have to be all four, correct?
Actually, I stand corrected on that, I checked the.
Yeah, majority still?
It's a majority of those present, so you need.
But if it was a tie vote?
A tie vote, uh, it's uh denied.
It's denied, okay, so. Hope it's not tied.
All right, no ties.
All right, Dr. Tillman, why don't you go ahead and um tell the board what you'd like to do?
Okay, very well, uh, I'm Dr. Nate Tillman, I'm a dentist and sole member of Dragonfire Properties, owner of commercial property at twenty-seven sixty-five East Main Road. Uh, I'm proposing a small addition to the rear east side of the existing building uh to be able to add um a small number of treatment rooms uh and administrative space needed to provide care um to the community that we serve. Um, I'm requesting a special use permit and dimensional variance for enlarging a structure on a substandard lot and parking requirement. Um, the building and the current parking areas, uh, the existing lot coverage have been in place and in use as a dental office since at least two thousand and one. Uh, I'm planning to remove the existing four hundred fifty-eight square foot garage and add a seven hundred fifty-five foot square addition to the rear of the building. It's a net of two hundred ninety-seven square feet or two-point-eight percent lot coverage. Um, including the parking areas in the building, the proposed lot coverage would be sixty-one-point-seven percent with a variance request of thirty-six-point-seven. Um, I feel that the two-point-eight percent increase in lot coverage is a small, of small footprint increase and does not encroach on adjacent properties, it will allow me the office space to provide care to the community that we take care of. Um, regarding the parking spaces by the town ordinances, um, it will require twelve parking spaces. As I've sort of mapped out the the design and the plan, I can only provide eleven spaces on the property uh with the dimensions of the proposed addition. One of the significant hardships with the parking is there's a telephone pole at the southeast corner of the lot that would prevent me from putting one additional parking spot there. Uh, I do have an agreement with the property owner of twenty-seven forty-three East Main Road um to utilize far, five parking spaces, um which would allow um more than the required parking spaces. Um, although I still believe with just the eleven spaces, I'd still be able to operate the same way that I have been um since I've had the, had the building. So I think my project um will have no changes to the space uh required for fire protection. It will not have any changes to the light and air between buildings. Uh, I don't believe it's gonna alter the character of the neighborhood. Uh, it won't create any lot setbacks less than the average of adjacent properties or impose a detriment to the public or immediate neighbors. Um, I think that's about all I have.
Okay, but uh for the record, I stand corrected, because this is commercial, it requires a full special use permit. Um, so, let me run down that criteria, because it's almost everything, but I'll cover it this way.
Okay.
Desired use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area.
Will not.
Okay. Okay. I'll be compatible with neighboring land uses.
I believe so.
It's.
Yeah.
Um, it will not create a nuisance or hazard in the neighborhood.
No.
It's been there for a number of years as a dental office.
At least two thousand and one, yes.
Okay. Uh, adequate protections, uh, afforded to the surrounding property.
Yep.
Okay, uh, safe vehicle access and liquid parking provided.
Yes.
Give a testimony to that. Patrol noise, smoke odors, lighting, any other objectionable features provided?
Should not have a problem there.
Okay. Soul rights of a butters are provided for?
Yes.
Okay. Uh. The proposed special use will be in conformance with purposes intent of the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, the town of Portsmouth.
Yes.
And health, safety and welfare of the community are protected.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Board. Mr. Chairman. Um. Under the lot coverage section in the petition. The petitioners included paved surfaces of five thousand forty eight square feet. Uh, it's my understanding that paved surfaces are not a structure and should not be included in lot coverage.
There is. It's so for paving for a health lot. Is not considered lot coverage. Paving for commercial lot is considered lot.
So, uh, my understanding is you're allowed. Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, to cover seventy percent of your property with structures. Um, and paving in commercial zones. So I guess my question would be. Um, is he exceeding that seventy percent? Does he need to include all of that? In his lot coverage calculation?
I think. That. For. That is. And. For. And. A for this to. Kind of that part of the law. And. On.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Any other questions for Dr. Tillman?
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. The only other question I had was under the dimensional variance page. Uh, a setback requirement for the front yard to the west is thirty feet. And the proposed distance of the property is plus or minus twenty seven feet. So does the petitioner need a, a three foot variance? For a front yard? Alright, so it's existing, but if we revisit this petition, don't we need to revisit any and all variances?
Well, no, the front. The front, that, this is the front of East Main Road. So.
Glad.
Nothing's going to happen to the front of it. This is.
I understand.
So that would be like your, your old property. Let's say that was close to East Main Road and you wanted to do something behind it. And you'd have to ask you, saying you'd want to ask for relief from the front of your house, East Main Road, which was built in sixteen hundreds. Oh, why not?
Okay.
You got it?
Just.
Just raising the question. Yeah, nope. Okay. Uh. Kevin, anything? Um, is it just yourself working there now or?
Uh, there's. I have, I have two, three dentists that we all kind of rotate being.
Okay. And I, Jess.
Yes.
Good. Good. So the garage in the back is coming down.
Yes.
And as far as parking goes, which is under Article Nine, Section A three. Um. You're one shy of the required.
One shy, yes.
And you're saying that the way your business operates, it's not that there's, it's. People don't come and like parking or shop.
Correct.
I have an appointment, I leave, you come, you have an appointment.
Yeah. And we, and we, we. We're pretty careful with how we strategically schedule our appointments, so we're not getting, you know, if we have, you know. Four treatment rooms, we're not having like eight to ten people at the same time, so we try to stagger it that way.
Got you. Okay. Alrighty, I just have to ask for about as interested parties. See anyone? Do we have? Nobody online? Great. Alrighty, so, uh. Dr. Nathan Tillman, uh, Dragonfly Properties, Dragonfire Properties, before the board taxes us was mapped twenty seven, uh, thirty four lot twenty seven. Seeking a special use permit because it is commercial piece property. Seeking a, uh. Lot coverage variance of thirty six point seven percent. But only an additional two point eight really over what currently exists. And also relief from Article Nine, Section A three regarding parking, where he will be one, proposing one spot shy of what would be required under that. So, uh, Mr. Board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um. This business has been there for quite a, a number of years, um, and hasn't created a nuisance or a hazard. It's met all the criteria in the special use permit. As the chairman walked through with the petitioner. Um. The lot coverage variance that's being sought is very deceiving in that. I know it's commercial property and under the ordinance, yes, it, it may need a thirty six point seven percent variance, but. Five thousand forty eight square feet is paved surface. So it's extremely misleading in regards to lot coverage of buildings and structures. As the petitioner pointed out, the additional lot coverage is really two point eight percent, which is minimal. And it's, in my opinion, the least relief being sought. The question of whether or not. Uh, the petitioner needs twelve spaces or eleven spaces, in my opinion, is mute because one additional space, as the petitioner pointed out, they alter their schedule. Um, and I don't think it's going to have a negative impact on traffic or create, uh, a safety hazard. So I think it's good to support businesses enforcement. The relief that's being requested is reasonable, and I vote to approve all the variances as well as the lot coverage and a special use permit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Board. Mr. Reposa. Okay, thank you, Mr. Donovan.
I also vote to approve all the variances and, and lot coverage and do support, uh, Dr. Tillman's request.
Thank you. The chairman also votes for reasons previously stated by Mr. Board, so. You're all set, Dr. Tillman?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hey, next item on the agenda is a petition by Justin Tisdale, Courtney Garvey, fifty seven Cedar Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, being represented by David Mark. Mr. Marklin.
Uh, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, David Marklin, on behalf of, uh, the applicants and owners, Justin Tisdale and, uh, Courtney Garvey. Uh, this involves property located at fifty seven Cedar Avenue. Uh, tax assessors map twenty one lot thirty seven. Um. This property is located in, uh, the R ten district presently. There is a single family home, uh, that's constructed on this property, a three bedroom home. Uh. It is a. A very small lot. Um, it's only a twenty five. Uh, two thousand five hundred and twenty two square feet. Um. And so it's substantially, uh, nonconforming. Lot of record. Um. In the package that was provided to you, there. There are some pictures showing a, um. Essentially two patios that are in the rear, uh, to the rear of the property. Um. Uh. What the, uh, what the applicant would like to do is essentially build a, uh, a deck. Uh, over those, uh, patios related. Rather than having those, those patios. The, the patios are. Are difficult, um, multi-level, it's. Kind of a safety. Um, issue relative to that. Um. They, so what they would like to do is, uh, build a deck, it would all be one level. It would be fairly consistent, uh, with the neighborhood. Uh, there are a number of decks off of, um. Um, to, to the rear, uh, yard of homes along, uh, Cedar Avenue, as well as Coral Street. Um, there were, um. Some pictures have been provided to, um. Indicate that, to show you that it would be in, in keeping with the, uh. The neighborhood. The deck itself is two hundred and fifty five square feet. It's no larger than the, the patios that are there. Um, so the, the deck, uh, would. Uh, account for roughly ten percent of the lot coverage. But, you know, you, you currently have the two patios that really, um, act as lot coverage themselves. Um.
As well, and one thing while you're kind of jotting through your notes, I want to correct in your application is you would put down that, um. Your request for relief from, for a special use permit under Article Seven, A one through C. And you don't require a special use permit. What you do require is, um. Under Article Six, Substandard Lot of Record, Section A four, which has a set of criteria similar to that, which I can run through real quick. Um. Kind of get it underway. And that would be, um, if it allow, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes, I've got, uh, that list here.
Yeah, but. You've got, uh, your application has the whole special use permit.
Okay.
And you don't require a special use permit. It's kind of confusing. It's less.
Less onerous?
Yes. I mean, there's only five things, that's it.
Okay.
So I'd rather just run through them for the record.
Okay.
Okay, so would it allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes, it still will.
Would it provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Uh, that's correct.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect neighboring property?
No, it would, uh, be substantially conforming with a number of the, the properties that are there.
Create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent property?
Uh, no, there's, there's significant, uh, lot coverage, uh, issues in that, uh, entire neighborhood.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
Uh, no, and in fact, um, uh, my clients did speak to their immediate neighbors who did not have any objections to what's being proposed.
There, so that's all there is for that one. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Alright. So in a nutshell, you're seeking an. Eight foot variance to the side for a new deck, but that's the same footprint as the existing patio and the existing house, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not encroaching anymore than the house of.
Um. It's a special use permit because it's an enlargement of a structure on a substandard lot of record. So the enlargement is.
Say that again?
It's a special use permit? Because it's enlargement of a structure, the deck is attached to the house, so it would be the enlargement of a structure on a substandard lot of record.
Okay.
As.
As.
Confused.
Yeah, me too.
So it's, it's the deck attached to the house.
Yeah.
So it's an enlargement of the house, the structure on a substandard lot of record. Which would be substandard lot of.
Record criteria.
Yeah.
Right.
So it would be the special use permit.
No, we're talking, they've got, we don't have a special use permit for substantial lots of record. We went through this.
It's large, and so special use permit, Article Seven.
And now you're going over to Article Seven.
Section A, C is enlargement of a structure on a substandard lot of record. Those, that's. That's why it's.
Kevin, do you agree?
Yeah, are you? According to provisions of Article Six. Section A. Six, section.
They're very similar.
Way too similar.
I mean, but the ordinance is written the way it's written, but I, Aaron's correct, we. We'd not have done that in the past, but technically Article, that section of Article Seven says you need a special use permit to enlarge.
So you're bouncing back and forth here.
Right, but and, but then Article Six, A four.
Right.
Says. Those are criteria must be met, it, it says. For a new or to enlarge. So. The ordinance has written really both apply. Even though there's a lot of overlap between the criteria. Alright, so I think you are correct going through those Article Four criteria.
Right.
Aaron's correct that.
So. Well, I can't wait till you guys rewrite this order.
I can't either.
First time I've seen this.
Yeah.
Residential zone.
Well, yeah, we talked at a meeting or two ago about that Article Six, A four was never even thought of.
As a special use permit.
Until, well, it was never even thought of at all.
Right.
Until a, uh, a particular petition brought it to light.
So Mr. Marlin, you know, just in a simple yes will do so, Article Seven, the full special use permit. Uh, A through J, do you meet that criteria?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Right. Exactly.
So the, the ten point one one represents.
The addition.
The, uh, the, the deck.
But it's still, you still require.
Right.
A twenty four point five. Right, you can state that only ten.
Okay.
Percent is the additional. This much already exists. But at the end of the day, you still need the variance question twenty four point five three.
Uh, for what's already permitted, okay.
Yeah. It, yeah. Yeah, because it told so. Uh, you want to amend your petition to show that the actual variance request for lot coverage is twenty four point five three percent?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to allow the petitioner to amend the petition?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, there we go. So, yeah, so you're correct, Mr. Marlin, proposed additional lot coverage, ten percent. Total lot coverage would then be twenty four point five three over what's.
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of how it goes.
Thank you.
Alright, so kind of back to my other question, so. The side yard variance is, uh, so the eighth foot is not proposed to encroach any more than what exists.
That's correct.
Okay. And the rear, uh, twenty foot, which is a new deck over existing patios. Is. Basically new, but it's where the old patio is and similar to the houses we see in the pictures around there.
That's correct, it won't, it won't extend any further than the, uh, than the rear patio.
Those are great drawn pictures, those really help.
Yes.
I like those. That, that was great.
I can't take credit for that, that, there was, uh, Mr. Picara who.
Yeah.
Very well done.
Very well done. Um. Anything else you want to add at all?
No, I don't think, I don't think, uh, it's necessary, it's a fairly straightforward petition, uh, this is also subject to CRMC permitting, so.
Yeah, right.
We, we do have to, to, to go there, uh, if we're successful here.
Okay. Um. I'll ask if we have any others or interested parties. Anybody online, Aaron?
No.
Okay. Um. Justin Tillsdale and Courtney Garvey are before the board for tax assessors map twenty one lot thirty seven, fifty seven Cedar Avenue, seeking a special use permit. And a, let's see, a lot coverage variance, twenty four point five three percent, where only ten point one one percent of that is new additional lot coverage, the rest already exists. An eight foot to the south side variance. Um. But not encroaching any more than already exists. And a twenty foot rear yard variance, and this is all to propose to, uh, put an additional deck onto their house and one of the properties, Mr. Board.
Um, Mr. Chairman. Interesting petition in that I've never seen, um, two special use permit requests for a residential lot. Um, we're under the ordinance, apparently you have to meet all the special use criterion, as well as the special use criterion for a substandard lot of record. Uh, the petitioner walked through with the chairman, all the criterion, uh, for both under the ordinance, and I'm comfortable with the answers. And I feel that he's met both criterion. For substandard lot of record and special use permit. Uh, in regards to the dimensional variances. Decks are reasonable accessory uses for the full enjoyment of the residential property. Um, this is an extremely small lot. Petitioner is constrained with the hardship at the lot itself is only. Uh. Two thousand five hundred twenty two square feet. Uh, the additional lot coverage, although it may seem excessive of ten point one one percent. Um, considering the size of the lot. Is a reasonable request, so I would approve the twenty four point five three lot coverage variance as well as the. Eight-foot side yard variance to the south and the rear yard twenty-foot variance uh to the east. I feel as though the petitioner, to deny the petitioner would amount to more than a mere inconvenience, and I vote to approve.
And the special use permit.
And a special use permit.
Thank you.
Both special use permits.
Yes, thank you. Uh Mr. Reposa.
Yeah, I would uh so vote to approve the lot coverage variances in both special use. Uh variances for reasons stated by Mr. Boardman.
Thank you, Ms. Horowitz.
I'd like to approve all variances based on previously these.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, and I'd like to uh also vote to approve both special use uh permits and the uh lot coverage variance.
Thank you. Chairman also votes to approve for reasons previously stated by Mr. Boardman as well. You're all set, Mr. Martland?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good day. Good night, yeah. Twenty-three, okay, last one on the agenda. Is a special use permit. On residential piece of property. I, I don't know, under Article six. Alteration of non-conforming developments says you need a special use.
So it's, Chappelle. This one is a little different. Court Chappelle on behalf of uh Elizabeth and Eric Shealy, who own this beautiful five-acre parcel down off Wapping Road. Those of you may know it as one of the old farmhouse, it's all stone. Uh their task is to preserve the integrity of the old stone house, to build a.
You're speaking to the mic.
Build a garage in addition. And what makes this unique is that this is one of the pieces of property in town that has two validly existing units on it. So it is non-conforming as to use because it has two structures. So all that's happening now is that under uh Article six, section C. If some, there's a difference between altering a non-conforming lot and altering a conforming lot. That is non-conforming by use. Two houses makes it non-conforming by use. And our ordinance says it's just a special use permit criteria. If we meet A through J special use permit, we can enlarge a non-conforming use. So one of the houses, the main house, there's a garage and a small addition going on, and the cottage is being rebuilt. The cottage could be rebuilt and taken down in its exact footprint. But as soon as you make the cottage bigger, because it represents the non-conforming use, you need a special use permit. That's it. There are no variance requested. There's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand square feet. With all of the additions, we're at under four percent lot coverage. That is just that when someone rebuilds a six-hundred-foot cottage and makes it a eight-hundred-and-ninety-four. Square foot cottage, it's larger, therefore requires A through J criteria. It had two dwelling units on the property yesterday. It'll have two dwelling units on the property tomorrow. It'll just be better-looking dwellic units that not only preserve the integrity of the original house and the original stonework. But now make the cottage, which doesn't match, architecturally match. How do I do?
So do you want to run through the criteria?
I will.
Chappelle, because that's what we need to vote on.
Swearing, Mr. Shealy, if you would.
Shealy, raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth.
Yeah.
Full name and address for Teresa, please.
Eric Shealy, nine oh two Wapping Road, Portsmouth.
Eric, as I explained to you, when it requires a special use permit, there's what we call the A through J criteria, so I'm going to run those through. Will your proposed addition and rebuilding of the cottage and the house. Will it be detrimental to the surrounding area?
No.
This is a five acre.
Opposite.
Yeah, it, it's going to make it look better and it's going to continue to look like the farm and the farm piece between. This is the piece that's completely surrounded by the Van Buren property, as we know as farmscapes. And it was, and she's the one that was cooperating with you to get uh the permits from DEM and things done to, to be here tonight, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. It'd also be compatible with neighboring land uses. This is a farmhouse and a farm area, and it'll continue to be that, is that right?
Yes.
And it will not create a nuisance or hazard in the neighborhood? Your closest house to you is over a quarter mile, is that right?
We've got a long driveway, we're in the middle of a, a big, big field, so it's about a quarter mile.
And given that adequate protection is afforded to the surrounding property by the use of open space and planting. Safe vehicle or acques- access and adequate parking are provided. You have, you're putting in a garage, it has a parking area.
Correct.
It meets all the parking and uh impervious requirements by lot.
Yep.
And uh it has that long driveway that is um graded and accessible, is that right?
Correct.
Control of noise, smoke, odors, lighting, and any other objectionable feature. It's a single-family house with a guest house before, it's a single-family with a guest house after.
Correct. I mean, this is to be lightly used, and this is uh kind of an overflow, pool house, cottage.
Solar rights of the butters are provided for?
Uh yes.
That we're not blocking anybody that's a quarter mile away. We're under the height variant, we're under the height requirements.
Yep.
And finally, the uh proposed special use will be in conformance with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. We're not developing a five-acre piece or subdividing, we're merely leaving what is there but making it better and most importantly preserving the integrity of the farm look and. That it's town's comprehensive plan asks us to strive for, is that right?
Correct.
Uh health and safety and welfare of the community are protected? Yes.
Can't see, yeah, yes.
There's no reason that this is going to do anything, that there's not more traffic, you are, the two units are still two units.
Nothing's changed.
And finally, um J is not relevant because you're not in the uh town center district, is that right? This is a residential R forty area, meeting all criteria.
Correct.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chappelle. Questions? Any others? No, I didn't mean so. Alright, um Eric and Elizabeth Shealy before the board for taxes as tax assessors map sixty-seven lots, seven A. Uh requesting a special use permit, um officials seeking uh to renovate and enlarge the existing cottage. That presently exists on their property, so they require no variances. They only need a special use permit. So, Mr. Boardman.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the petitioner walked through all the criterion with the chairman. And clearly, this petitioner meets all the criterion. I believe it's nearly a five-acre lot. Lot coverage is three point nine percent. There are no dimensional variances being requested. The petitioner meets all the criterion, and I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa.
Uh I also vote to approve. For reasons stated by Mr. Boardman.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Horowitz? Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
I vote to approve for the reasons stated by.
Uh chairman votes to approve for reasons previously stated by Mr. Boardman as well, so it's all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Could I have one? Back in, motion been made, second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Very good. I don't think I'll drive through.